Regular meeting number 16 will now come to order. Will you please stand for the playing of the National Anthem? Councilmember Favor, would you please lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This evening council is pleased to be joined by Father Vincent Nguyen, Parochial Pastor at Saint Lattesless Corpus Christi Parish. Welcome to council.
We pray. We meet here to serve our great city of Columbus, to use our resources wisely and well, to represent all members of our community fairly, to make decisions that promote the common good. We recognize our responsibility to the past and the future and the rights and needs of both individuals and community. As trusted servants, we seek blessings on our deliberations and on our efforts here today. May we act wisely and well. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's Favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's Favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be written to the record?
Not this time.
Are there any resolutions by member of council, starting with Councilmember Elizabeth Brown?
Thank you, President Harden. I don't have a resolution, but I do have an announcement that this Wednesday, April 3rd, at 4 o'clock PM, I will hold a finance committee hearing in council chambers to review a proposed expansion of the Convention Center Hotel in partnership with Franklin County and the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority. Public testimony will be accepted. Anyone wishing to address city council on this matter must fill out a speaker slip at City Hall before 4 o'clock on the day of the hearing. And the hearing will, of course, be broadcast live on CTV and available afterwards on the city's YouTube channel. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Favor.
Thank you, President Harden. No resolutions today, but I do have two announcements to make. The first one is for any Franklin County resident who may need to get their license reinstated. Our clerk, Clerk Lori M. Tyack, is hosting a driver's license workshop that starts this weekend, Thursday, April 4th, from 8:30 AM to 3:30 PM. There will also have hours on Friday from April 5th, excuse me, 8:30 AM to 3:30 PM, and on Saturday, April 6th, 8:30 AM to 3:30 PM. If you need some additional information, please feel free to go to www.fcmclerk.com. Pre-registration is encouraged at this time. I believe at the end of last week, they had over 300 folks registered for the event. And then I also just want to take an opportunity, since it is April 1st, to announce my community hours. So Thursday, April 11th, from 4 to 5:30 PM, we will be at the Safari Coffee Shop located on 3414 Cleveland Avenue. And then on Wednesday, April 17th, from 1:30 to 3:30, we'll be at the Tim Hortons located at 2062 East Livingston Avenue. And then on Friday, March 24th, from 9:30 to 11:00 AM, we'll be at Dunkin' Donuts from 5095 West Broad Street. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor. Councilmember Reemy.
Thank you very much. Council President Harden, I have no resolutions this evening, but would like to announce my, my community hours coming up. Thursday, April 4th, this Thursday, at Einstein Bagels at 6700 Sawmill Road, from 12 to 1:30. Then next Wednesday, the 10th, at Cafe Caro, I'm not going to say that, Carowack, at 2250 North High Street, 11:30 to 1:00 PM. And then on Tuesday, April 16th, we're at Cafe Phoenix, 39 East Gay Street, between 4:00 and 5:30. Thanks so much. Hope to see everybody out there.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson.
Yes, President Harden, I do have two resolutions this evening. The first resolution, I'm going to ask Ryan Johnson from the Office of Minority Health and all the individuals here who are with Mr. Johnson to come to, up to the podium. And Dr. Roberts, our health commissioner, is here. This resolution is to declare April of 2019 as Minority Health Month in the city of Columbus. And whereas National Minority Health Month was first started more than 100 years ago as a National Negro Health Week, in fact, Dr. Booker T. Washington dispatched a letter to the leading African-American newspapers in April of 1915 proposing the observance of National Negro Health Week, arguing that health was the key to progress and equity in all things, and that without health and long life, all else fails. Whereas Dr. Washington called on local health departments, schools, churches, businesses, professional associations, and the most influential organizations in the African-American community to pull together and to unite in one great health, national health movement. And whereas this observance grew into what is today a month-long initiative to advance health equity across the country on behalf of all racial and ethnic minorities, National Minority Health Month. And whereas Columbus Public Health created the Office of Minority Health to provide leadership in terms of reducing health inequities in minority communities in Columbus and its surrounding areas, focusing on health awareness and disease prevention. Whereas the Columbus Office of Minority Health fulfills its mission by monitoring and reporting the health status of minority populations, mobilizing community partnerships and local action, developing policies and plans to support health efforts by informing, educating, and empowering our communities. And whereas the Minority Health Month campaign of 2019, in addition to partnering with various community organizations to present programming throughout the month of April, will feature events that include health, community health forums, wellness events, healthy eating, cooking, and walking promotion events, a documentary on HIV and initiatives regarding HIV treatment and prevention, chronic disease prevention, health equity, substance abuse, nutrition, and more. Whereas this campaign will provide information which will promote healthy living, showcase providers of grassroots healthcare resources, highlight health disparities in minority and underserved communities, ultimately working to find ongoing solutions to improve minority health year-round. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus. This council hereby recognizes April of 2019 as Minority Health Month in the city of Columbus. I ask for adoption from my colleagues.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's Favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you so much. On behalf of my colleagues that are here this evening, and Dr. Mashika W. Roberts, our health commissioner of Columbus Public Health, I would like to say thank you for this resolution. My name is Ryan E. Johnson. I'm the program director for the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health. Joining me this evening, in addition to Dr. Roberts, is Director Angela Dawson with the Ohio Commission on Minority Health, Makita Porter, our Health Equity Section Chief at Columbus Public Health, Rebecca Nelson, our Division Director, Columbus Public Health, and the rest of my Columbus Public Health colleagues, Regina Bronson, Hebra Noir, and Dana White. The mission of the Office of Minority Health at Columbus Public Health is to provide leadership to reduce health inequities, and we do that through our four core competencies. And as you guys know, April is Minority Health Month. You all have received a packet of information with highlights everything going on during the month. It's a 30-day campaign of numerous activities designed to solicit the interest and participation of minorities or providers of health services to our minority populations. In planning for Minority Health Month, our office works with the Minority Health Advisory Committee, and that's nearly 50 stakeholders. And we meet probably about six times a year to talk about current health initiatives, to discuss health-related issues, and to provide feedback on the integration of services to our minority populations. If you would like to attend a meeting, our next one is going to be on May the 14th, 10 o'clock in the morning, Room 119C at Columbus Public Health, 240 Parsons Avenue. Obviously, this meeting is open to the community. So to kick off Minority Health Month, I just want to take a moment to highlight just a few of the initiatives. On April the 10th, we're going to have a panel discussion with five Columbus Free Clinics that have made their mission to serve the most vulnerable in our community. After a wave of proposed changes to immigration laws, anti-immigration rhetoric may be keeping residents away from health providers in order to protect their own safety. So we'll engage in a discussion about resources for those navigating the healthcare system. On April the 11th, also at Columbus Public Health, we'll have a chronic disease prevention forum to share and learn about the social determinants of health that are addressed through healthy eating and physical activity. On April 18th, our Health and Human Services Committee right here in council chambers will have testimony and will present Columbus residents regarding our programs, initiatives, and services that we offer and what we're doing to address the social determinants of health, specifically surrounding our work through coalitions. On April the 25th, the National African-American Wellness Walk Initiative will be hosting cooking with dad demonstrations, and that'll be at COSI. And on the 27th, working with the Columbus CAPA Foundation, we'll be conducting a forum focused on addiction in our African-American community. And that's going to be at the OSU African-American and African Studies Center. So for a complete list of calendar of events, please visit our website at www.columbus.gov-publichealth. You can also contact 311, or you can reach out to me, Ryan Johnson. I'm at 614-645-7335. Thank you so much for allowing me to say a few words regarding Minority Health Month initiatives.
Thank you, Ryan, and for all the team that's here with you. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues?
Thank you.
No? Just want to say thank you for your work. It is important work. Again, thank you to Director Dawson for being here. I know you've had your kickoff in March, and I know there are lots of programs going on through the state of Ohio focusing on minority health. But again, I wanted to say thank you to each and every one of you who work every day to provide information to our community, to begin, to try to change inequities that are certainly happening in our community in regards to health and minority health. And there are lots of issues that are of concern to minorities in this community, and I just thank you for what you do each and every day. The disparities are real, and we have, again, I want the quote that was here from Dr. Booker T. Washington, "Health is the key to progress and equity in all things." If you don't have great health, you do not move forward. So I thank you for the work that you do each and every day to try to make sure that we have equity amongst people in this community to move them forward. Thank you and congratulations. I look forward to the hearing on April the 18th from 3 to 5, where we'll be able to hear about the collaborations, but also really talk a lot about the ongoing disparities and inequities in regards to people's healthcare. Thank you.
We'll be there.
Yes, to celebrate.
Okay. All right. Here we go. All right. So my next resolution is Resolution Number 118X-2019, and I'm going to ask for Andrew Mullins, the COO of Lifeline of Ohio, Marsh, Marshall Cheatham, who was a kidney recipient, and Laura, I love Laura Stevens, going to come up? I don't know if the whole team's coming up, but the team from Lifeline of Ohio. This resolution is to proclaim April as Donate Life Month in the city of Columbus and to encourage residents to give consideration to sharing the gift of life through organ, eye, and tissue donation. Whereas more than 113,600 men, women, and children are currently awaiting a life-saving organ transplant in the United States. Approximately 20 people die each day because of lack of an available organ. In Ohio, there are more than 3,000 people awaiting an organ transplant at any one time. In fact, in central Ohio, there are more than 675 men, women, and children currently listed for an organ transplant at the Ohio State University Wexner Medical Center and Nationwide Children's Hospital. Whereas a high prevalence of diabetes, hypertension, obesity, hepatitis B and C results in racial minorities being disproportionately represented on transplant waiting lists. Organ transplantation positively impacts patient survival, but greater access is limited by a severe donor shortage. African-Americans make up the largest group in need of a transplant. In 2015, only 17% of African-Americans needing a transplant received one. Whereas a single donor can potentially save the lives of eight people through organ donation by donating their heart, lungs, liver, pancreas, kidneys, and small intestine, and enhance the lives of many more than 50 others through tissue donation by donating corneas, veins, heart valves, bones, skins, tendons, ligaments, and nerves. Whereas Lifeline of Ohio is a designated organ procurement organization dedicated to promoting and coordinating the donation of organs and tissue for transplantation in this area. Whereas a national blue and green will be celebrated by Lifeline of Ohio on April 12th. This is a nationwide celebration, encourages Americans to wear shades of blue and/or green in support of organ, eye, and tissue donation. This event will draw attention to the need for more registered donors to save and to heal those who are waiting for their second chance at life through organ, eye, and tissue donations, which give the gift of life. Whereas more than 5.7 million Ohioans have made the important decision to register an organ, eye, and tissue donation donor in the Ohio Donor Registry. Moreover, the Ohio Bureau of Motor Vehicles makes it easy to register your advanced directive decision to become an organ or tissue donor on a driver's license or state identification card by signing up online at lifelineofohio.org or by filling out paperwork or registration form. Whereas discussing your wishes regarding donation is one of the most important additional steps a family can take. And so therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Columbus. If this council does hereby declare the month of April of 2019 as Donate Life Month in the city of Columbus and encourage residents to give consideration to sharing the gift of life through an organ, eye, and tissue donation, I move for adoption.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's Favor, Reemy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Mr. Mullins, the floor is yours.
Council President Harden, Council President Pro Tem Brown, and members of council. My name is Andrew Mullins, Chief Operating Officer for Lifeline of Ohio, the Designated Organ and Tissue Recovery Agency, serving central Ohio. On behalf of my colleagues and the more than 675 local individuals waiting for a life-saving organ transplant, I want to thank you for your longstanding support of organ, eye, and tissue donation. I'm honored to share with city council that 2018 was a record year for donation on a national, state, and local level. For the sixth year in a row, more lives were saved through organ transplantation than ever before in the United States. Locally, Lifeline of Ohio saw an increase in all aspects of donation. 130 individuals gave the gift of life through organ donation. 594 individuals gave the healing gift of tissue, which is a 25% increase over 2017. And 249 heroes gave the gift of sight, a 47% increase over 2017. And although last year was a record-breaking year for donation on all levels, there are still thousands who wait for their second chance at life. On Friday, April 12th, as part of National Donate Life Month, Lifeline of Ohio and its supporters will join thousands of Americans in wearing blue and green. As in past years, we hope that by wearing Donate Life colors that we will draw attention to the staggering health crisis by showing the remarkable difference organ and tissue donation makes in the lives of recipients, living donors, donor family members, and those waiting on the gift of life. To further highlight this important initiative, that same evening, Lifeline of Ohio will be hosting a candlelight lighting ceremony to honor those touched by donation. We would like to invite the members of city council, as well as the citizens of Columbus, to join us at the 7:30 PM at Lifeline of Ohio's donor memorial located at 770 Kenier Road in Columbus. This ceremony will feature speakers with every connection to donation and transplantation, and will serve to celebrate the ripples created by the gift of life and honor all of those whose lives have been impacted by donation. At this time, I would like to introduce Marshall Cheatham, a Donate Life Ambassador, whose life was changed forever thanks to the generosity of a donor.
Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Brown, and members of the council, good evening. My name is Marshall Cheatham. In 2012, I went to the doctor for a routine checkup, where he noticed that I had some health issues that were going on. I was referred to a nephrologist, where I learned that my kidneys were functioning at about 30%. I tried to maintain my health over the next couple of years, but one day, everything changed. I began to feel very sick, and I went straight to the emergency room. Once I arrived there, immediately started me on dialysis. I was very, very ill. It was only a few days later that I learned that I needed a kidney transplant. That day, when I heard those words, mortality really hit me hard. I just could not believe it. I went to dialysis three times a week for five hours a day. My life was on hold while I waited for a generous donor and the gift of life to come my way. The wait for the new life was very hard. After six years of waiting, on August 16th, 2018, I received a call that I was so desperately waiting for. I had a bucket list of things that I wanted to accomplish when I received my second chance, and I'm already working my way through that list. Thanks to my generous donor, I've been able to dedicate a lot of time, the time that I would have spent on dialysis, with my organization, the Columbus Saints Drum and Bugle Corps, which I began in 2003. I've been volunteering a lot more with Lifeline of Ohio and working at OSU sporting events to help raise money for the Drum and Bugle Corps. And my wife Lisa and I have been able to travel to New York and to Atlanta to visit family. None of this would have been possible without my donor, who had the compassion and generosity to give me a healthy future. On behalf of all the organ, eye, and tissue recipients, thank you for supporting and encouraging Columbus residents to be organ, eye, and tissue donors. Thank you, council, very much for allowing us to speak today.
Thank you, Marshall, and I, for coming and sharing your story, but also just the ongoing work, even through all the challenges, you were committed to the Columbus Saints, to working with young people to ensure that they would begin to continue to try to move forward in their lives because of you mentoring them, providing them with an opportunity to use their skills and talents in the music area. So I just appreciate that, because you never gave up, you never stopped during that time that you were going through a struggle. And you were asking, I mean, everyone knew you were needing an organ, but you still, I mean, you were, I know, being prayerful, and through that, you were always still serving this community, working with our young people. So thank you. I'm so glad you have been blessed, and I know that you're, and your wife, and that's difficult having serious medical situations in a household. And so I want to thank her, and I know it's not been easy, but just thank her for sticking right there and helping you to get past this situation, and also the donor out there that, and the donor's family that have provided you with your second chance of life. And so for individuals who are, you know, viewing council, this hearing tonight, or listening to this hearing, that hope they will consider being a donor. I am on the registry. I've been on the registry, and so I have it on my driver's license, I held it up, but absolutely, I understand the importance of doing that. And so again, to the organization, thank you for leading this effort in our community. It's wonderful to hear the numbers have improved. I also mentioned, this is, we always do this together, this is Minority Health Month, and to hear the numbers, again, again, the disparities in terms of people of color being able to get access to organs, and sometimes it's because, you know, there's just differences in how we're made up, and so to find a compatible donor. So again, so please, if you're out here, if you're able, please consider being, going on, being a person, to be on the registry to be able to donate organs. So with that, I don't know if there are any other comments to be made by my colleagues, but again, thank you so much. Thank you, Marshall, for being here. Thank you, Lauren. Thank you, Andrew, for your leadership. Thank you so much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you, councilmember. As I read Resolution, as I read this resolution, would Becky Westerfield from Huck House and Ms. A.J. Casey from Stonewall Columbus please come forward? This evening I have ordinance, Resolution 0112X-2019, which is to declare April 1st, 2019 Consensus Awareness Day. The United States Constitution mandates that every 10 years a count of all people living in the United States and territories be taken. Data obtained by census determines how the almost $700 billion will be distributed from the federal government to states, local, and tribal communities. Mayor Andrew Ginther and Commissioner Kevin Boyce established the Columbus and Franklin County Complete Count Committee to collaborate with community partners and ensure an accurate 2020 consensus count. We have, we have two great advocates with us this evening. Ms. Becky Westerfield, who is Chair of the committee's Youth Homelessness Subcommittee, as well as Ms. A.J. Casey, who is Chair of the LGBTQ Subcommittee. Thank you both for being here. Before I pass, I want to turn it over to you guys to hear a little more about your guys' work, the work of the subcommittees, and how folks can be engaged.
Well, thank you for having us. I was especially excited to be invited, because I feel that so often, our youth and our vulnerable youth are easy to pass over. The number one question I get asked about youth who are homeless is how many? And the second question is, who are they? I know that making sure that we count this vulnerable population in this process will take additional effort. But if we are complacent in our efforts to count anyone, then we should make sure that we are putting our energies into counting everyone. Counting these young people will bring additional federal dollars to this community, as we already know from the YHDP, or the Youth Demonstration Homeless Project. I can tell you both as the Executive Director of Huckleberry House and as the Chair of the Youth Committee for our Continuum of Care, that now is not the time to limit our efforts to nurture our youth to full independence as adults. They need us now. We need them tomorrow. On a personal level, we all know that having the facts is the best way to plan our future. We also know that the only problems that will never be solved are the ones that are unacknowledged. Making sure that all youth, but especially youth who are poor or disenfranchised, are counted. counted, will lead us to community plans that solves problems.
Welcome, Ms. Casey.
Thank you. Council President Harden and Council President Pro Tem Brown, members of City Council, thank you very much for inviting me to be here this evening. I thought I'd share with you still a line from the remarks of David Brown, who served as grand marshal of the Pride Parade in two thousand and eighteen. When he addressed our brunch committee, he used these words that matter so much right now. He said of the LGBTQ community, "We are everyone, and we are everywhere." People in the LGBTQ community, seventy-six percent of us, according to some data, are not out at work. So we never know who we're talking to, who's part of the LGBTQ community. And so it's important that the LGBTQ community count because we never know where we are. You never know where we are because we are everyone and we are everywhere. As a population, the LGBTQ community is overrepresented in some of the worst data around. Overrepresented in addiction cases, overrepresented in homelessness, overrepresented in poverty, health, and healthcare disparities in our community, seniors needing support for housing, nursing homes within the LGBTQ community, and certainly programs that help people who are facing unemployment. And within the LGBTQ community, transgender people, the data and their disparities and overrepresentation are even worse. So as part of the LGBTQ community, we understand that the census will not count us specifically as members of the LGBTQ community, with the exception of couples who are married, and even then, there are restrictions in that. But we also recognize that being everyone and everywhere, we cannot and we must not allow ourselves to be undercounted in this census. And it is because of that that Stonewall Columbus stands with myriad of LGBTQ-serving organizations here in the city to reaffirm that we will not be erased and that we will not be undercounted because we are all too often overrepresented in the data. Our numbers affect that six hundred or seven-hundred billion dollars that of federal funding. We should be and must be counted for services in hospitals, nursing homes, clinics, and diverting funds to people who live in poverty. So we are everyone and we are everywhere, and I'm here today to stand with and on behalf of the LGBTQ plus community to say that we will be counted. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky, and to A.J. I would just echo your comments that it is so very important that everyone in our community is counted. The dollars are directly connected to the folks that are here. And so I was very appreciative at the kickoff. We showed there are, we're doing, it looks like the work is being done to make sure that harder-to-count communities are, there is specific focus on that. And so I'm very grateful for those folks in the community who are stepping up and leading. This is really how we have the resources to do the work that we all talk about each day. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I, also, if folks are looking for more information, they can visit www.columbus.gov backslash Columbus Counts. With that, if there are no comments, I move for adoption. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we can clap. And be counted. I'd also like to invite up Mr. Carter Womack and the junior, and the folks here from the Junior Development, Executive Development Program. I think I'm putting it on the spot, and my notice says to recognize, but since you guys are here, I thought it'd be great to come and hear about the program and have the young people introduce themselves.
My name is Carter D. Womack, and my company is Leadership at its Best, and we have a collaboration with the Ohio State University in the inaugural launch of our Junior Executive Development Program in partnership with their Ohio State Upward Bound Program. And these are high school students. There are twenty in the program. We have Saturday academies once a month and field experience such as this, so that our young people can get exposed to what's going on in our city. And this is the first time for most of them, or all of them, at a city council meeting. So I'm going to ask them to give your name, grade, and school, if you don't mind. Want to start?
Hello, my name is Fatima Tuso. I'm in the tenth grade, and I go to Columbus Alternative High School.
My name is Leila Clark. I'm in the tenth grade, and I go to Columbus Alternative High School.
All these Pegasus in the house.
I am Halim Matan. I am in the eleventh grade, and I go to Mifflin High School.
Is that Mifflin? Beautiful.
My name is Dominique Stewart, and I'm in the tenth grade, and I go to Harvest Prep.
My name is Madison Gonzalez. I'm a junior in high school, and I attend Centennial High School.
Awesome.
My name is Alasia Scott, and I'm a freshman, and I go to Northland High School.
What school is that? Mifflin?
Northland High School.
Northland, awesome. Welcome.
Hello, my name is Deja Moore, and I go to South High School.
Ah.
My name is Kabir Delahi. I'm in the tenth grade, and I go to Columbus Alternative High School.
Very good. Well, welcome to council. The truth is, this is your council, this is your body, this is the people's house, and so we want you to get very comfortable here. This is where you come to advocate for issues that are important to you and to the communities that we represent, so welcome. Are there any comments from council members?
I'm seeing all those girls.
Yeah.
So I just, I'm very pleased. I don't know, you said you have twenty, you have twenty students? And what's between the, what's the breakdown between boys and girls?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three. Well, that means we got seventy percent girls are there that are leading the way, and we're very pleased to see you here. And as council president stated, this is your house. And continue to listen to Mr. Womack, as well as being a part of your Upward Bound Programming, your teachers, your family members, for you to continue to move forward, because girls do lead. And so happy to see you here. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, guys, and welcome to council. Are there any comments by elected officials, auditors, city attorney, city treasurer, known from the courts? I want to recognize University Area Commission, Ms. Doreen is here, welcome. Are there any requests by members of council for the removal ordinance on the agenda? Seeing none, we now have a motion to waive reading of the titles of thirty-day legislation. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record the ordinance numbers of thirty-day legislation?
Finance Committee ordinance is seven-thirty-two, seven-ninety-five, and eight-oh-five dash twenty-nineteen. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is six-eighty-seven and eight-fifty dash twenty-nineteen. Economic Development Committee ordinance is eight-sixty, eight-sixty-one, and eight-sixty-two dash twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two speakers on the first reading portion of the agenda. The first speaker is Jocelyn Henderson, speaking on zero-six-eight-seven dash twenty-eighteen. Ms. Henderson, welcome to council. Ms. Henderson, would you state your name and your address and any organization you may represent?
My name is Joyce Lynn Henderson. My address is twenty-eight-nineteen East Dublin-Granville Road, Columbus, Ohio, four-three-two-three-one, and I represent the BRAD organization.
Thank you.
We were asked to speak on the public utilities regarding the revolving loan account agreement for the Environmental Protection Agency.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And we're all definitely in favor of that, but one of the things that we know is that we also have the need for more affordable housing.
Certainly.
And I, like, as I stated a minute ago, I am a member of the BRAD organization. I live in a fifty-five-and-over community located on the north side of Columbus. I, again, support the item that's being voted on this evening, and we would also like to see the city do even more in the area of truly affordable housing. And here's my story. I've lived in several places around Columbus due to rent increases that forced me out. Last year, I lived in a nice community off of Hyatt Morris. The rent was affordable, I had good neighbors. However, they, the owners of the property informed all the residents that the buildings were going to be renovated, and we all needed to move out, and the rent was going to be elevated, and they wouldn't even tell us what the rent was going to be at that point. The building was going to be turned into luxury apartments, and none of us were able to afford it. The place that I live now, as I stated, is a fifty-five-and-over community. It seems to be, seemed to be a decent place, but I found out that the rent there also increases every year. And as a result, the situation has forced me to spend about forty percent of my income on housing. My income isn't increasing every year, and I'm not getting any younger. As I've looked at senior housing, even more of those options are too expensive for me. This means that as a single woman, I have to look into buying a home or continue to be faced with rent increases. And there are thousands of other people in this community just like me who are faced with this situation. We're glad to know that Mayor Ginther is taking initial steps with the ballot initiative and the land trust, and we have shared our stories week after week to show that more is needed. We want to work with the council to take additional steps in tackling our housing crisis. What BRAD wants the city to do is encourage developers to set aside new housing units for families that make less than forty-two thousand a year, give an additional five million per year to the Affordable Trust Fund. And our question is, what will it take for the city to grant these requests?
Thank you, Ms. Jocelyn. Just a note of, on an order to the BRAD organization and to folks that are signing up to speak, it's important that if you're going to speak on an ordinance, that it be directly connected to the ordinance that is before us. We, I think I speak for this council, are extremely appreciative of your advocacy, and I would like to work with members of the BRAD organization to make sure, just in terms of, this is just in terms of process, that we're speaking in the right place and so that your advocacy is really, is really focused. But thank you so much for coming. Thank you for sharing your story. The next speaker, I apologize, to come for council, is Ms. Marcy Huff. Is this Ms. Marcy?
Yes.
All right. And Ms. Marcy is speaking on zero-eight-five-zero, also in the Public Utilities Committee.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Marcy Huff. I'm a member of the First Unitarian Universalist Church in Clintonville and of BRAD at four-o-four South Third Street. I support this ordinance, just as the city of Columbus is working with the Village of Obet's on sewer and water issues. The city must work more with other communities to tackle our affordable housing crisis. This is my younger sister's story. My sister was bursting with potential from the day she was born, but potential isn't always realized. My sister faced many obstacles in her life, some of her own making, most otherwise. For example, in her early twenties, she met and married a good man, and shortly after, she had to have surgery for scoliosis and spent nine months flat on her back in a body cast. Still, she recovered and had two amazing daughters by the time she was thirty. Eventually, though, her marriage floundered, and she and her husband separated. She and her daughters moved to Knox County, where she lived as an underemployed renter for a few years, until she came across a listing for a small farm nearby. Of course, the cost was more than she could manage, so she asked her husband for help, and he bought the farm. But eventually, they divorced. She got the farm in the divorce settlement, but she lost her health insurance and, as fate would have it, was diagnosed with breast cancer soon after. She battled cancer for twelve years or more. When she could no longer manage her health expenses, she sold off half her property. And when that money was gone, she simply stopped paying her bills. When she was nearing sixty, she was told her cancer was no longer treatable. She died at home at sixty-four. My sister's story did not take place in Columbus, but like my sister, people in Columbus want housing they can afford. The ballot initiative and land trusts are good steps forward, but more funding is needed to address our housing crisis. BRAD has two requests of the city. Encourage developers to set aside new housing units for families making less than forty-two thousand dollars a year, forty-two, yes, and give an additional five million dollars per year to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What way to take for the city to grant these requests?
Thank you, Ms. Huff. What I would, what I would like to do is, I've asked my aide to get with representatives from BRAD. I would like to sit down. I think it's important that we talk about what we are doing and our strategy, and then so we can figure out how we can work together to both advance our shared goals, to create more affordable housing in our community.
That would be wonderful.
Thank you. He'll be getting with you guys in the back. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Would the clerk now read those ordinance numbers into the record?
Resolutions of Expression one-fourteen-X, one-fifteen-X dash twenty-nineteen. Finance Committee ordinance is four-oh-nine, six-ninety-six, seven-eighteen, seven-thirty-three, seven-eighty-two, seven-eighty-five, and eight-twenty-three dash twenty-nineteen. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is seven-twenty, seven-fifty-one, seven-fifty-eight, seven-fifty-nine, seven-sixty-two dash twenty-nineteen. Public Safety Committee ordinance four-three-nine dash twenty-nineteen. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is six-fourty-five, six-sixty-seven, seven-seventy, and seven-seventy-one dash twenty-nineteen. Technology Committee ordinance is eight-twenty-six and eight-thirty-nine dash twenty-nineteen. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is seven-ninety-six, seven-ninety-seven, eight-fourteen dash twenty-nineteen. Housing Committee ordinance eight-three-four dash twenty-nineteen. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance seven-two-four dash twenty-nineteen. Economic Development Committee ordinance is six-fifty-two and seven-seventy-three dash twenty-nineteen. Administration Committee ordinance is eight-thirteen and eight-fifty-five dash twenty-nineteen. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance eight-ten dash twenty-nineteen. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance is eight-forty-seven and eight-sixty-three dash twenty-nineteen. And appointments from the mayor's office numbered A-zero-zero-five-four dash twenty-nineteen.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have two speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. First speaker to come before council is Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins is speaking against ordinance zero-eight-three-four dash twenty-fourteen. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins, which committee is that ordinance?
Sixteen-twelve Arlington Avenue. I'm speaking in against of housing with favorites C-A twenty-five-zero-eight thirty-four two-thousand nineteen. Although I've been back here multiple times to talk about the cost of demolition, I would just want to know the exact cost for each property when it comes down in certain parts of the neighborhood? And also, I want to know how come residents wasn't notified? And how long does a property, a vacant structure, how long it's got to sit before it comes to a wrecking ball? Well, for a prime example, let me just tell you here. So for instance, for Arlington Avenue, that I've been on Arlington Avenue for twelve years. And, you know, I wasn't notified before any property was torn down, sixteen-thirty-nine Arlington Avenue. In the case of this, it was torn down, but now we have this in the place of it. So to tell me here the cost of a property, a huge property or a smaller house, how, and how much would that be? And today, we still have other property through the central Ohio area that's been sitting vacant and idolized, such as ten-fifty-eight East Sixteenth Avenue. And, you know, I talk about this multiple times after time, you know, none of this stuff is paid. So, you know, we talk about the cost of demolition. So, you know, we talk about the cost of demolition, but here we are. We still have property that's still standing, with property owners refuse to fix this. Then we talk about just the last set of people that's, that's up here, you know, talk about affordable housing, but I'm not going to go into that either. But again, I'm against this for eight reasons. You know, we got to start looking at this money in certain parts of the neighborhood. How much is it, if it's a square footage of a property that's being torn down? How come residents or business owners are not notified like myself? You know, here we are, we got all these properties still standing around, and there's nothing or being done. I know that we have this wonderful, well, I don't know if Steve's showing this back there now, but, but still, I'm still looking for some answers, answers that I need to know. What type of property was torn down, and what's the dialogue that y'all have with this kind of money? And how much is the whole portfolio? That's what I want to know. And how many properties was taken down between the four to five years ago at this time? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins.
Mr. Wilkins, we can provide you with that information if you'd like, how many properties have been torn down on an annual basis, since, I believe, since twenty-eleven-ish. But on average, just depending upon the size of the property, it's around sixteen thousand dollars. Now, you, there's all other types of factors you have to consider, whether or not there's asbestos at the property that would increase the price of actual demolition, but that has been the, the average amount for a single-family residential property.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. The next speaker to come before counsel on the consent portion of the agenda is Ms. Desiree Moore. Ms. Moore is speaking in favor of consent, ordinance zero seven two zero.
Hi, my name is Desiree Moore. I'm here with the Bread Organization at four oh four South Third Street. I think that it's great that this city will provide transportation through VAT. Recreation centers are very important for our community. Recreation centers also provide shelters for kids and families who are homeless. I'm here today because I was supposed to come, and I was sick, so I didn't make it last time, but I still wanted to come and share my story today. When I worked at the Van Buren Shelter, I worked with many single dads who struggled to find adequate housing to live with their children. You could typically only stay in the shelter for up to thirty days. This is typically not enough time for families. A lot of agencies are struggling with budget cuts and, and don't have the appropriate funding to be able to assist families. To add to that, when the families would finally find places, a lot of those landlords would want first month's rent, last month's rent, a security deposit as well. I understand housing struggles from a personal experience. Can you imagine being on a waitlist for Section A housing for twelve years? That was me. I have four children ages eight to twelve, and we have lived in homeless shelters. I know people who had their children taken because they didn't have adequate housing or even the resources to find housing. This shouldn't be the case. During those twelve years, I worked a lot of odd jobs to try to support me and my family. I have a son with special needs. I can't hold down a regular job, and even so, more recently, my other son is being diagnosed with something. So it is not adequate enough jobs that's more able to help during this time. I got approved for Section Eight, so I have that, but initially, I didn't find someone ready to rent to me. Once I did, now I have a home. But I still know a lot of my friends that are dealing with this same thing. I just have two requests for the city today. Encourage developers to set aside new units for families that make less than forty-two thousand and give an additional five million per year to the Affordable Housing Trust. What would it take for the city to grant these requests?
Thank you, Ms. Moore. I'm not leaving your question unanswered. It's that it's, it's a myriad of things that we're going to need to do, and so I look forward to sitting down and having a conversation, like I told the other young lady.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you for coming down. Are there any other questions or comments from council members? Seeing none, may I get a motion for the consent action portion of the agenda? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Consent action portion carries. We now go into the second, second reading of, of portion of our agenda. A thirty-day legislation. First committee to come before counsel is Recreation and Parks. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Brown. President Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in Recreation and Parks, we have one ordinance, number zero seven five five dash twenty nineteen, to authorize the Director of the Recreation and Parks Department to enter into a contract with Mark Haynes Construction Incorporated for the Franklin Park Cascades and Ponds Restoration Project, to authorize the expenditure of two million, two hundred thousand dollars from the Recreation and Parks Voted Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The ponds and the associated cascades between them at Franklin Park were constructed for Ameriflora back in nineteen ninety-one. They are in need of repair and restoration so that they can continue to provide recreation and education opportunities at the park, which is accessible to all people, as a unique local feature and water-based ecosystem. Funding for this park is made possible through the voted Recreation and Parks Bond Fund. The scope of work includes deepening the upper pond from three to ten feet to help keep the water clean and free from overgrowth. Both ponds will be relined, and the edges of the ponds, along with the cascades and waterfall features, will be cleaned and restored. Three pedestrian bridges will be reconstructed, along with the connecting features between the ponds to mimic natural stream conditions with native plant species, including a natural wetland filtration system. ODNR has committed to restocking both ponds following the construction. This restoration is responsive to resident feedback and request that this unique community asset be restored. Emergency action is being considered so that there is enough time to secure the many native plants needed for the restoration project before the desired planting window in the fall. Any questions from colleagues? Yes? Yes, Councilmember Tyson?
Yes, Chairwoman Brown. I, and I just speak to Deputy Director Rakowski before he came, before the hearing started. And I just want to make sure that we are, that this is really the, this funding will take care of the pond situation for years to come. Because I know that since two thousand sixteen, we have put in five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars into those ponds. And so whether they be fixing the pumps, bringing the pumps above ground, I mean, it's just been, we have been working on that for quite some time. And so after speaking with him, I do have all the legislation in front of me, because I said, we've been, we have been working on these ponds for a long time. And I know that the residents really want these, the pond, the cascading falls to be working, because people want to be in that park and enjoy the walk. And so I am hopeful that now this will be, you know, almost two point eight million dollars, that these ponds, the pond, the bridge, the water will be flowing with this investment. And I, so I think that yes, hopefully that, a yes would be that. But then the other is, when will the project be completed?
Director Rakowski, can you speak to project completion?
President Pro Tem Brown, President Harden, and members of council. As you know, the first step in all of this was to repair the pumps. Those pumps had not been working properly for years. They were buried in a small pit. It was extremely dangerous and for our folks to get down there and try to repair those pumps, and they were just beyond their useful life. So the first piece of all of this was really to get the pumps brought, new pumps, put above ground in a new pump house, and to get that system working again. So pulling the water from the lower pond, bringing it back up to the top, the, the upper pond, and then having that water flow through the cascades. So we delayed the phase two a little bit as we brought all that above ground, got it working properly, and then had an ability to observe that it was working the way that we wanted it to work. Now we're doing the second phase that, again, was delayed a little bit, but we want to do this the right way. We're going to deepen that upper pond, we'll get the cascades fixed, we're going to bring native plannings in, we're going to create that wetland that President Pro Tem spoke of, and then get this thing going. I don't have the actual completion date yet. When we get that, I can share that with you as we, you know, sign the contract with the contractor and get their schedule. But we are going to begin work as soon as we possibly can, because we also want to get this done. But we do want to do it in the right way, and we want to have a lasting fix here. The only thing that had been suggested was deepening that lower pond. We don't have that within the budget, but that's not a necessary element to all of this, to get it working properly. If in the future, we have additional money and we choose to use it that way, that would be the only other, really, piece of this that we could modify, but it is not a necessary modification at this time. So I will make sure that when we do get that schedule, we'll share it with council so that everyone knows when that work's going to get started and when it'll be completed.
Thank you, Chair Brown.
Thank you, council member. Council President, did you have a question?
I think council member spoke to my issues as well.
Great. Thank you so much. Any further questions? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
That's all I have, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Brown. The next committee to come before counsel is... is the Utilities Committee.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Utilities Committee, we have three pieces of legislation. The first is ordinance number six four one dash twenty nineteen, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to modify an existing professional engineering agreement with CHA Consulting for the Mohler Street Overflow Interceptor Sewer Project, to authorize the transfer within the, within an expenditure of up to one million, one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and nineteen cents from the Sanitary Sewer General Obligation Bond Fund, and to amend the twenty eighteen capital improvement budgets. This project was identified in the City of Columbus Integrated Plan for the twenty fifteen Wet Weather Management Plan, which was developed with input from various stakeholders and submitted to the Ohio EPA. The project will mitigate sewer overflows into the Scioto River from the Mohler Streets and provide wet weather relief for the South Side Interceptor Sewer while reducing water in basement events in that neighborhood. This project will design and construct a multiple separate sewer, storm sewer outflow to Scioto River. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next piece of legislation is ordinance number six seven five dash twenty nineteen, to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract with Pan America Supply Inc. for one-time purchase of a transformer for the Division of Powers Dublin Avenue Substation, and to authorize an expenditure of up to one million, two hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars within the Electricity General Obligation Bond Fund. The existing transformer is at the end of its expected life and must be main, must be replaced to maintain the existing reliability and system capacity for the department. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Last piece of legislation is ordinance number seven oh one dash twenty nineteen, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Kenmore Construction for the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant Bio, Bio Solids Land Applications Improvement Project, to authorize the appropriation and transfer of twelve million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars from the Sanitary Sewer Reserve Fund to the Ohio Water Development Loan Fund, to authorize the expenditure of twelve, twelve million, seven hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety dollars from the Ohio Water Development Fund, Loan Fund. The work for this project consists of providing of all the labor, materials, and equipment, and incidentals for modifications and improvements to the Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant's liquid bio solids application process, including modifications to six existing liquid bio solid storage tanks and one exiting thickening centrifuge, construction and installation of the new facilities, including the two loadout stations, new solid conveyance system, and electrical equipment. This contract will continue to seize efforts to benef, to beneficially reuse bio solids generated at the wastewater treatment plants in accordance with the City of Columbus Green Action Plan, which specifically calls for expanded use of, reuse of bio solids. Bio solids are organic materials produced in the city's wastewater treatment process and can be used to benefit local agriculture. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all we have in the Public Utilities Committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair Dorans. The next committee to come before counsel is the Public Service and Transportation Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Faver. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in the Public Service and Transportation Committee, we have ordinance number seven one five dash two thousand nineteen, to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the roadway improvements, Hamilton Road Extension, and to declare an emergency. The city must acquire certain fee simple title and lesser real estate located in the vicinity of Central College to Walnut in the Rocky Fork Black Lick Planning Area. The city's acquisition of the real estate will help make, improve, or repair certain portions of the public right-of-way, which will be open to the public without charge. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number seven eight nine dash two thousand nineteen, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into agreements with and to accept grant funds from the Columbus Foundation relative to UIRF Milo Grogan Second Avenue Improvements Project, and to, as necessary, return any unexpected grant funds to the Columbus Foundation and to declare an emergency. The aforementioned project will culminate in the design and construction of various improvements on East Second Avenue between North Sixth Avenue and St. Clair in the Milo Grogan Community Area. The Columbus Foundation awarded the city grant funding up to one hundred and sixty-six thousand payable over two years from the Joseph A. Jeffrey Endowment Fund to support the installation of street trees within the project limits, consistent with recommendations outlined in the Greening Americas Capitals Report published by the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That's all we have.
Thank you, Chair Faver. The next committee to come before counsel is Economic Development Committee. Councilmember Remy chairs that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden. Tonight, we have two ordinances that deal with an agreement city council originally approved in two thousand sixteen. There are some technical issues that need address, and the first ordinance is zero eight four five twenty nineteen, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to amend the Enterprise Zone Agreement with Seven Eleven LLC and Wood GP Limited for the first time by revising the project's scope to remove the second part of the proposed construction, which involved a mixed-use facility and the associated parking garage from the project, and to apply the proposed property tax exemption only to the newly-constructed commercial office facility with a total investment of approximately twenty-five point two seven million in real property improvements and to declare an emergency. I am going to throw this to Deputy Director Rory McGinnis to give us a little bit more background on this particular ordinance.
Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council, ordinance is zero eight four five twenty nineteen and zero eight four six, that's the next item for your consideration, are interconnected. In ordinance zero eight four five, the Department of Development is seeking to amend the existing enterprise zone agreement with Seven Hundred Eleven LLC and Wood GP Limited to remove the mixed-use facility and associated parking garage from the project's scope outlined in the current agreement. The existing enterprise zone agreement would still apply to the commercial office component. The developer requested this change because the commercial office component of the project will be completed this summer, while the mixed-use and parking garage will not be completed until the first quarter of two thousand twenty. Without making this change, the developer would not be in compliance with the terms and condit, conditions of the existing enter, enterprise zone agreement that required the construction of the office, mixed-use, and parking garage to occur simultaneously. In addition, the total investment by the developer would also change from the thirty-five million in the existing enterprise zone agreement to twenty-five point three seven million in a revised agreement. In ordinance zero eight four six twenty nineteen, the Department of Development is seeking to create a community reinvestment area, agreement with Lincoln Pearl LLC, which is a subsidiary of Wood GP Limited. The developer is proposing to invest ten point five million in improvements to build five thousand square feet of retail. feet of retail, 16,476 feet of new residential units, and a new parking structure of approximately 98,313 square feet at 36 and 40 East Lincoln Street. This is what was proposed in the existing enterprise zone agreement that council had approved. That was ordinance 3118 in 2016. The 50% 15-year CRA will only apply to the 125 parking spaces of the garage associated with the commercial office space. This change will allow the developer to remain in compliance with the existing enterprise zone agreement and allow the developer to move forward. Thank you for your consideration in supporting both ordinances to improve our city, and happy to answer any additional questions you may have.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues? This is a really good project overall from reviewing it today in our briefing. It creates over 87,000 square feet of new Class A office space, 5,000 of which is retail. And speaking with our auditor, talking about income tax revenues, these, these office jobs are critical for continued growth in our income tax. There's 16,476 square feet of new residential, 125 new public parking spaces, which is about triple what was there previously. Deputy Director, we talked a little bit previously, this was a government, a city-owned lot that was about 45 spots, if, am I correct?
Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council, you are correct about that.
And that was, and then a private lot, so the, the city lot generated zero tax dollars for this Columbus City Schools, while the private lot was a, was a very small number. But, but the projection is over the next 10 years that it's going to generate $2 million in additional revenue for the Columbus City Schools because of this, this deal. And we already heard that it's almost 100% leased at this point, pre-leased. So I think it's going to bring significant value to our schools and certainly to the city itself. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? If seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Next I have ordinance Number 846-2019, to authorize the Director of Development, the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with Lincoln Pearl LLC for a tax abatement of 50% for a period of 15 consecutive years on real property improvements in consideration of a proposed total investment of approximately 10 and a half million, and to declare an emergency. I do have one speaker this evening on this ordinance, Mr. Motil, Joe Motil. Welcome back to council. Please state your name and your address, as well as, you have three minutes.
President Harden, Protam Brown, members of city council, Joe Motil, reside at 167 West Cook Road, Columbus, Ohio. When are you going to stop giving tax abatements to luxury real estate developers? By continuing to use the excuse that the Short North by definition remains a distressed neighborhood, thus qualifies as a community reinvestment area and makes new development eligible for tax giveaways. The wood companies, Schiff Capital Group, Pazuti Companies, Crawford Hooring, and others have gotten fat on the back of taxpayers at the expense of our children's education, teacher salaries, addressing the opioid epidemic, and helping seniors. The Short North is one of the most thriving neighborhoods in the entire Midwestern United States, and you and the mayor still feel obligated to grease the palms that feed your campaign committees. Since 2014, the wood companies have given elected city hall politicians $102,000, and in just the last year, a combined $27,707 to Mayor Ginther and Council President Harden alone. In terms of campaign contributions, these amounts are significant for municipal campaigns, yet they are chump change to your millionaire developer friends when you consider the return on their investment that is received after you hand out their tax abatements. And in this instance, Mayor Ginther and this city council is offering what amounts to a 20% off sale. $2.26 million in tax savings for a $10.5 million risk-free development for $102,000 in campaign contributions. Your tax abatement policies through the creation of your CRAs has successfully driven out nearly every last low-to-moderate-income resident in the Short North, including the seniors that once lived in Bollinger Towers, while creating what has basically become a gated neighborhood while developers market to the wealthy and a less diverse population, thus helping to maintain Columbus's status as the number-two most economically segregated city in America. How many residential units are going to be created out of the roughly 16,476 square feet of this development, and how many of those units are going to be priced for affordable housing? And after you undoubtedly pass tonight's tax abatement, the city council will have handed out $267,550,415 in tax abatements over the last 42 months. And that does exclude the blank check tax abatement that you gave to another large campaign contributor, luxury developer Wagon Breder Development, for their Marble Cliff Quarry project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Motil. Deputy Director, again, this is just some technicalities, addressing some of those from what was previously passed in 2016, is that correct?
Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council, that is correct.
And again, to reiterate, you know, this is going to create about $2 million in additional revenue for the Columbus City Schools over the next 10 years. Had this, had this not been approved in 2016, likely what would those lots turned into?
Chair Remy, President Harden, members of council, the enterprise zone agreement that was passed in 2016 was essential to getting the developer to commit to the level of office development that's in the project. We're in an ultra-competitive marketplace, we're going to pursue job creation aggressively. All the incentives that the city offers are performance-based. If the developers do not build the project or create the jobs, they do not get a dime of city income tax. It is important for us to pursue and use every tool we have available to increase our income tax base. By increasing our income tax base, it gives us the ability to have the funds that we need to address our major concerns and issues that affect our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much Deputy Director. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass. Thank you Chair Remy. The next committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you President Harden. I'm going to ask for Sheila Camden to walk towards the podium, please. Of ordinance 831-2019, it is to authorize the Board of Health to enter into a contract with Jewish Family Services for the provision of eligible HOPEWA supportive employment services for the period of April 1st of 2019 through December 31st of 2019, to authorize expenditure of $100,000 from the General Government Grants Fund and to declare an emergency. The Board of Health will contract the Jewish Family Services to provide supportive employment services. Supportive employment services provides employment support for HIV-positive HOPEWA TBRA clients identified for participation to acquire and maintain employment. The long-term goal of this service is for clients to acquire and/or strengthen their skills to become successful in the workplace, increasing their financial stability, which will result in graduation from the housing subsidy assistance provided through the HOPEWA TBRA. Ms. Camden, the floor is yours, to share the partnership with the Columbus Public Health and the Jewish Family Services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. As you know, the HOPEWA program provides for the implementation of long-term comprehensive strategies for meeting the housing needs of low-income persons with HIV/AIDS and their families. Jewish Family Services plans to enter into the partnership with Columbus Public Health and Equitas Health to provide comprehensive wraparound services for individuals being served under the HOPEWA programming. This partnership contemplates a combination of short-term tenant-based rental assistance and collaborative support among housing and medical case managers and career consultants. This will empower participants and move them towards independence. Jewish Family Services will provide the supportive employment services to acquire and maintain employment. The long-term goal of this service is for these individuals to acquire and/or strengthen their skills to become successful in the workplace and increase their financial stability, which will result in graduation from the housing subsidy assistance provided through HOPEWA. JFS will provide comprehensive employment services, including strategic job search, soft skills training, through a combination of one-on-one and group services. Clients will receive additional wraparound supports based on individual needs, with access to services such as our monthly legal clinic, case management, short-term solution-focused counseling, and connections to community services. By collaborating with HOPEWA Housing and Case Managers to ensure clients' needs are met, we will ensure efficient and effective service delivery. The HOPEWA Supportive Employment Services Program will be staffed by a full-time career consultant, who will work with the other 27 members of our career team, as well as our agency's case managers and clinical counselors. A business services team member will devote a portion of her time to the program as well to help ensure that participants' skills and experience are appropriately matched with training or apprenticeship opportunities and with in-demand positions in area companies. Year one of the three-year contract will be considered the pilot program and would cover the remainder of 2019. The pilot would start small with 30 clients. We anticipate that about 25 of them will receive employment services, with probably another five that may be too medically fragile to be assisted at this time. The pilot also gives us time to work through any program kinks and resolve any kinds of issues with the information or data that we will be sharing, and then we'll grow the program size in years two and three. Thank you.
Thank you Ms. Camden for coming and sharing, and this is again a pilot program. The only question I will ask is that, who will refer those clients to your, to Jewish Family Services?
The clients are coming through Columbus Public Health screening, and then also Equitas Health Housing, and they will have already been screened and then sent to us.
Well, thank you. I think it will be a great partnership, and to, again, the wraparound services, the medical wraparound services, and as well as, you have run a very successful program through Jewish Family Services, and hopefully those, that partnership between Equitas Columbus Public Health and your organization will help individuals who are ready to go to work to provide with the tools and skills for them to be able to become employed in the City of Columbus. So thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I move for passage.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
That's all I have in my committee.
Thank you Chair Tyson. Seeing no further, business to come before council. Can I get a motion for adjournment? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass. Okay, well, let's go ahead, and we only have one ordinance in zoning, so let's go ahead and get to zoning, and then we will hear our three speakers. So... Yeah. Regular meeting 17 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to expel with the reading of the journal?
Second.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee. All members serve on the committee. The floor is yours, Councilmember.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I will briefly explain the rules of the council as pretending to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and, I'm sorry, three proponents, three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side. We provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. So on the advice of the city attorney's office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against any council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you, thank you Director Master. I have one ordinance, ordinance Number 809, to grant a variance in the provisions and sections 3330, 32.02, our rural district, 3312.43, required surface for parking, and 3363.41A, storage of the Columbus C codes for the property located at 1431 Community Park Drive, to permit a contractor's storage yard and parking lot with reduced development standards in our rural district. The applicant is Blue Ring Holdings LLC. The proposed use is a contractor's storage yard and parking. I think this, if this is passed, this will bring this owner into compliance. The city departments, city department's recommendation is approval, the New Orleans Community Council's recommendation approval, 15 to 0. If there are no questions or comments, I will move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance passed.
Thank you. That's all we have in zoning.
Thank you Chair Tyson. See, no further business in the zoning committee. May I get a motion for adjournment? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting adjourned.